I don't have one of those. Ready? Yeah, okay, sure, sure. Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is noticed as a regular meeting of the common council because there's obviously a majority of the common council here, but it is not a regular meeting in that there will be no business conducted, there will be no votes, there's no action before us. Tonight I wanted to just go over a couple of quick things. Over the past couple of weeks, I've had a chance to speak via phone with several folks, both for and against the potential interchange and the potential development projects. Generally, I respond to emails with emails, but when there's issues with broad community impact, like these potential projects, I like to, whenever possible, make a phone call. So I'm sure there are several of you in the room that I've had a chance to spend a few minutes, or in a couple cases, a lot longer than that, talking about your feelings, your concerns, and your questions on this project. I think it's important to remember that each of us up here, we're not only elected to represent the citizens of the city of Milton, but also to lead those citizens and to make decisions that are in their best interests, both now and in the future, and to make those decisions based on all the information possible. On this potential project, we are nowhere near having all the information possible to make a decision, and more than that, we have no decision before us to make. Because the land in question with these potential projects is not in the city of Milton, and because we have no items requiring action before us tonight, there's not been any occasion for public input to this point. Not being sure when there may be enough information and specifics to present in a public forum, but wanting to ensure that citizens have an opportunity to be a part of this discussion, I thought, and the council thought, it was important to have this listening session. Although we are only elected to serve the citizens of the city of Milton, we also thought that it was important to hear from citizens of the townships. Because although we live in different municipalities, and though many of you are represented by other governing bodies, we are in many ways one community. Before we get going, before we open it up to comment, I wanted to clarify a couple of things, just as kind of a baseline. The first is why this conversation had started in the first place. This conversation about an interchange came up in 2005, again in 2010, and when I became mayor, one of the first priorities I had was to identify a plan to mitigate the loss of thousands of drive-through traffic counts that would be lost when the 26 bypass went live. Our over 200 small businesses were rightfully fearful of the impact on business in the city of Milton if Milton were to lose the majority, and actually, the vast majority, of its drive-through traffic. Now, those fears have proven well-founded, as Jerry and I and many of our council field calls on a weekly basis from business owners who are either having a hard time or on the verge of going out of business. I recently held three listening sessions in the city, at which the loss of in-city traffic and its impact on our small businesses was the primary concern of citizens in attendance at all three. Our development planning on our east side should, if done properly, drive traffic off the bypass and back into our city center eventually. But unfortunately, that'll be too late for many of our local businesses, as the state DOT planned and executed a bypass that completely cut off the city of Milton, and those decisions were made nearly a decade ago by almost entirely different people. Our city can also benefit greatly from a direct access point off the I-90 roadway. That roadway is scheduled to be expanded over the next decade, and those benefits were recognized when the council and Economic Development Commission voted unanimously to support exploration of an interchange in October of 2013. There are benefits our public safety response times on the interstate from an interchange. There are benefits economically that can be attained if any interchange is developed appropriately. And as I've said 100 times at this point, there's only one sort of development that's worth all this trouble, and that is a development that positively impacts regional employment through the addition of family-sustaining jobs, and that those jobs and those companies not only do not diminish the quality of life in the city of Milton, but enhance and improve it. Something I'm in support of is the interchange. I believe this is a good thing for the city of Milton. It will increase the visibility and access to Milton from a major roadway. We need more people coming to Milton to spend money, to build houses, to bring business, employ our citizens, and to reduce our property taxes. Now, there's some things I don't have enough information on. One of them's the annexation. The very first time I saw an annexation map that did not go down County M was when it was printed in one of our local papers. The development of this corridor can be a good thing, but only if it's done properly and with our community values and quality of life in mind, and only if the development is sustainable and environmentally friendly. There is no development, if there is no development, then annexation that would require us to replace crumbling roads, provide improved police protection, and additional fire protection simply don't make sense on an economic basis for the citizens of the city of Milton. I'm undecided on the development, as I understand it, and that's because of one big component. If the development as presented conceptually is to occur, then that would be a job-dense development that would capitalize on new economy jobs in advanced manufacturing and high-end, large-scale warehousing and distribution. These are exactly the kind of jobs that I promised to pursue when I was running for this office. But what if there is no development? One possibility that's been discussed is the possibility of this being mined for gravel. The city, in my opinion, has no interest in gravel pits in our city limits. We must have assurances from a developer that the development as proposed is how it will be executed, and that there will be no gravel mining, or slaughterhouses, or large-scale factory dairies, or other things that aren't in keeping with our community values. I would caution also, though, there is no need for any of those uses to be annexed into the city. Those are certainly things that can be done outside the city limits, and things that we would have essentially no power to stop if they were proposed outside our city limits. Couple things I'm against. I'm against any development that does not fit our vision of well-paying jobs in Milton. I'm against any development that will diminish the quality of life, or will not fit with our community values, and I am against any development that would seek to force people off their land. Here's the truth. The fact is that the city of Milton lost over $30 million in assessed value during the Great Recession, and the region lost thousands of jobs. The assessed value is estimated to be recovered sometime in the city of Milton in the next decade. As you all know, costs have not gone down on anything. The state has taken additional monies from us and all municipalities in the form of reduced shared revenues and road aid, to name a couple. We've lost 15% of our state aid in the last few years. That aid is never expected back, despite the state's so-called surplus. The state has further tied our hands in affording ever-rising costs to serve our citizens and support our employees by limiting our ability to tax as necessary to bridge the gap of the lost revenue and the unfunded mandates. The city of Milton, in response, has reduced operational spending each of the last three years, and yet continues to provide excellent service to the citizens we serve. It is, however, a requirement for cities to seek opportunities to replace that revenue without disproportionately driving up expenses. Commercial development drives revenues through taxes, but extracts far fewer services than residential developments, which allows us to serve our citizens not only more efficiently, but more effectively. The city also needs an increase in what we call daytime population. That's the number of people who spend their workdays here in the city of Milton. That number drives the success of small businesses like restaurants, shops, grocery stores, gas stations, specialty stores, the very businesses that give Milton its unique flavor. The unemployment rate in Rock County has remained unchanged in over a year. The jobs that were lost were well-paying. The jobs that have replaced them have been, in many cases, much lower wage, and so the number of 7% unemployment, the second-highest in the state, is almost certainly misleading in that it doesn't truly represent the number of underemployed. And so I think something has to change. Someone has to take the lead. I have family who drives to Missouri every Sunday to go to work. I am told the people who drive to Texas and Indiana to go and find a job that'll support their families that they've left back here in Wisconsin, Monday through Friday, because they can't find work in our community anymore to support their families. Now, some decisions we make in this room are very easy. Some are very, very complex and difficult, and this is one of those. But I believe that every decision that we make as a council should be made with eyes wide open, with all the information, and after an honest discussion of all the facts. See, my family and I will be here in Milton so much longer than I'll be privileged to serve this city as mayor, and I take my responsibility of representation and leadership more seriously than nearly anything I do outside my family. Now, I don't know if this proposed development can truly deliver on its positive potential, or if it's even worth happening at all, but I do know that there's enough of a possibility that it's worth gathering all the information and making a well-informed decision. It would be foolish not to gather information, not to seek references, not to examine the possibilities, and not to consider both the positives and the negatives that make an informed decision based on a complete body of information. And so tonight, I'd like to welcome anyone who wishes, regardless of where you live, to come forward and share your thoughts and questions on these potential projects. I apologize, there are no new specifics, and there will be few answers to the questions you pose, but the city will add your questions to our already long list of questions on this development and the potential interchange, and will then seek answers in good faith and in our due diligence to make an informed decision in the best interests of our community. We have a stack of people here who have asked to speak tonight. We have another larger stack of people who have registered their feelings on these potentials. And so this is a random list of the folks who will speak. There are folks from the town of Fulton, the town of Milton, and of course, the city of Milton. I will call you up. When your name is called, you can come to the podium. Please state your name again, your address, so that we can register it in our record, and then we will, because we have a decent amount of time, folks will be given three minutes. Try to keep it to three minutes. We'll try to keep this to a reasonable amount of time, mostly out of respect for staff, who have already put in a very long day here at the city. So with that, I will call the first name. I have Bob and Jan Cunningham. Get us warmed up here. Get us warmed up.
Okay. The reason I'm here is, and I thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me the opportunity to speak to all these people here. So with that, I thank you. My concern is this feeder road that we haven't had a lot of publicity about. It would go right through our farm, and then head across, it'd go actually right through Black Hawk Campground, and then head up to County N and 26, somewhere around the Van Alton Farm. It looks like on a map. I have the map here in front of me. I don't know, you've probably seen this, I don't know. It's just a line on a map right now. I just want to know if that's on any city-long-range plan. It seemed like it came out of nowhere to me, so rather than just me speak, I'd like to kind of get a little dialogue going and see where we can go on this.
Tonight, we've been advised by our staff and everyone that we don't have a lot of those answers that folks are going to be seeking, so I'm not familiar with the path, the roadway that you're talking about. But we're happy to take the information and get those answers.
But what I'm wondering, is it on any long-range plan for the city, or it begins right through, our farm is over here, cuts up and ends up up here? This was handed out in the Fulton Township by Mr. Watson. Everyone who was present got a copy of that map, so...
I can look at it.
We all got a copy of that in the mail.
I was just kind of wondering, you know, the cost of that, that's about a five-mile road, and I don't know if you're talking a two-lane highway or a four-lane highway? Are you talking about bridges or just intersections? And that's kind of what I'm worried about. That cost could be astronomical. Is the city going to pay for that road? I don't know how they could budget a road of that magnitude. Or are they looking for help from the state, or...
There was an article in one of the papers from this last week or so, where there was a statement made by Mr. Watson, that he tried to buy the Black Hawk Campground, but was turned down because somebody else had borrowed it ahead of him. And so that road, he, at that point, apparently, has decided not to follow.
So that's just, that's all I have to tell you about that. I was just wondering if you had something to add to that, as far as from the city council, what your feeling on that road is.
Mr. Mayor, we can add that the city's planning firm did not draw that road in there. Yep, correct.
Does the city know about that before this week, or this month, or this year?
No.
So it's not on your long-range plan, then?
Watson didn't bring that up in his presentation either.
He did not, to our city council, no.
In other words, you don't know anything about it until right now?
Correct, yep.
Well, no, I mean, obviously, we got that map, so we knew about it. At least, I can say I knew about that road before tonight, but I, you know, what Jerry said is that that's not something that we drew.
And it's certainly something he never talked about, who's going to pay for it, or, I mean, all we saw was a line in the map.
I guess part of it is because he didn't want to drive past Milton West Grade School with a truck route with semis? I guess...
That's excellent. The truck traffic past Milton West is a big concern that we have, so it's one of our questions that we'll be seeking answers on as we go forward.
I guess my question is, where are we going to go with this road? Is this a positive thing that you're going to push for, or is it just something you don't even know about yet?
We haven't done any analysis of any kind of truck route in that area. In our comprehensive plan, there is a truck route identified in a different direction. Thank you. Next is Stephen Jeter.
So my name's Stephen Jeter. I live on West County M in the township of Fulton. I actually live on the school district line between Milton and Edgerton, and the school buses turn it at my corner, so I get to see both sides. I'm a teacher in Milton. I've taught in Milton for 19 years now, and every year, we see families move into our district. We have families that come from Janesville, from Beloit, from Rockford, and we've even had some come from the Chicago area. And when they come, you would say, "Why are you coming to Milton? What does Milton have to offer you?" And sometimes I ask at teacher conferences, I say, "Why Milton?", and invariably get the same answer, and the answer is, "For our kids because of two things." And the first thing is, Milton has great schools, so kudos to everybody who participates in that. Excuse me, but Milton also, they say, is the kind of place we want our kids to grow up in. And what they're talking about is quality of life, and if you press them on that a little bit, they say, "Milton, compared to where we came from, has less congestion, they have less overdevelopment, and less pollution, which means for parents, that's a great place to raise kids." It also means that Milton has less traffic, they'll say, "And we feel safe to let our kids walk to school. We feel like our bike riders and our bus riders are not sharing the road with a lot of cars, trucks, and semis, which they had to do in their old homes." You can ask anyone. Don't take my word for it. Ask a teacher, ask a principal, ask your neighbor. Ask Superintendent Tim Scheiger. He'll tell you the same thing that I'm telling you right now, that we have what parents are looking for here in Milton. Apparently, that's small-town America, and they can't get it anywhere else. Now, we're talking about some real tangible concerns that Milton has, and it's not to minimize that, but this is a very real issue anyway. This is something that can't be manufactured, this is something that can't be bought, but this is something that can be lost, and once you've lost it, you can't get it back, ever. So you need to ask yourself, council members, will this development project ultimately add to our desirability as a family-friendly area? Will it add to our quality of life, as you mentioned, Mr. Frazier? Or will it diminish one of Milton's strongest selling points?
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Next on the hot seat is Dave Gilbertson.
I live on Kitter Road, and we get the paper every week, you know, and every day, and when I seen this about the mining part of it, the first thing that came into my mind was what's happening in Janesville. It wasn't that long ago that it was in the paper, they were running out of room for their landfill. And what they get out of that ground is, you know, sand and gravel, they have a processing plant, all that sand gets shipped out. What do they do with that big hole? They fill it with garbage. My daughter lives two blocks from that landfill. She can't even go outside in the summertime. It smells so bad, and if they end up putting a landfill there, it's going to be devastating for this town. Because you get a west wind, you're in big trouble, because it stinks unbelievable. But that's pretty much, and this, where it's connected to the Rock River, in a way, it makes sense, because you've got a big hole in the ground, it fills up with water. Where are you going to get rid of that water? Right into the Rock River. It makes sense. So I don't know what's going on here, but there's something, we're not being told. So, and these new jobs, are they new jobs, or just jobs that were in Janesville, Beloit, Illinois, just being relocated to here? That's all I got, because it makes sense.
Thank you very much. Next up is Angela Jeter.
I really don't want to speak large groups, really. Scare me. I just wanted to have it noted that I agree with, I agree with my husband, and I just want that noted. We moved here from Minneapolis 30 years ago, and we moved here because it's small and it's rural, and that was what we wanted, and we've raised our kids here. And we have 10 acres, that's about a mile and a half from where this would be. I feel like this is under the category of urban sprawl. I feel it's not necessary. Am I doing that?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's one of many reasons we're building a new city hall.
I just feel like it's not necessary. I feel like there are very many old buildings around that are empty, that could be refurbished and used if we really need jobs and businesses and places to make businesses. I feel like those places, the land has already been compromised. I don't feel like we need to dig up all this beautiful farmland for something that we could do elsewhere. And I know this is an emotional statement, but my neighbor that lives by me, and she's young, and she has three little children, their favorite thing to do in the summer is go outside, they get a blanket and they look at the stars, and the first thing she said to me was, "We're not going to be able to see the stars like that anymore, because we have the Janesville lights to the south and the Edgerton lights to the north, and we're just..." And it's maybe selfish, but I just feel like there have to be some areas that stay left. So, anyway.
Very much. Mr. Paul Green.
I really didn't have an agenda, but I just wanted to be able to talk if I wanted to talk. But I want to follow up on what this lady just said. I've read that there's thousands of square feet of empty buildings that could be used for the kind of thing that Mr. Watson is proposing in Janesville. And it just seems like if he's that concerned, he could buy property in Janesville and put his things there. I also had a question of, if there, if there was another road on the original plan, where is that? Where would that go? You know, you said you didn't know about this road that was going up, and where is the other one that was previously proposed?
We have a planning meeting scheduled with our planning firm after the next city council meeting, where we would look at existing land use, and then we would see if the council does direct us so at the staff level to evaluate alternate truck routes. The primary concern that we've heard from many people about this project is the truck traffic going by Milton West Elementary School. Some options include upgrading County Highway M, which the IAJR report will help address, as well as possibly Minot Road as an alternate route. There's a variety of different options that our planning firm would provide us, but we're waiting for council direction to see if that's something that they would want us to explore.
Well, if the interchange is built to facilitate this project, which would have this close access to the interstate, why would any traffic come through Milton?
I'm not sure I fully understand.
Why would any truck traffic come through our existing city of Milton if it has this access to the interstate in the other direction, or right there in the middle of the project?
To the fullest extent possible, we'd like to see if we can keep the actual truck traffic out of the more congested areas of the city, so...
Why would it come here anyway?
It wouldn't necessarily need to come into the city of Milton, the truck traffic itself, the truck traffic, we would assume, would go to the industrial park.
Right.
And then, if necessary, on the Highway 26 bypass, that we would anticipate that that's where the truck would stay on, either Class A roadways or the interstate. So I wouldn't anticipate a lot of truck traffic, but however, there are some industries that, you know, utilize truck traffic, like air products and some other industries over on the city's west side.
That's all.
Next up is Jim and Joan Thompson.
I'll try to stay within three minutes, even though there's two of us. My name is Joan Thompson, and my husband and I live on North Newville Road in the town of Milton. We're on the town, we're on the border between Milton and Edgerton Townships. Our property is colored purple on the map, and on Thanksgiving Day, someone brought us a copy of the Edgerton Reporter, and we learned that our land was surrounded by and included in a proposed industrial park. It's outstanding to us and very concerning that Mr. Watson has never spoken with us, and yet our privately-owned property is under proposal as a development. And that is, that is very, I don't know if anyone here has any idea how we should be feeling, but it doesn't make a lot of sense. Now, when we first heard about this proposal, the idea of good-paying jobs coming to this area, we said, "You know what? Even though we have built this house with our own hands, planted trees, raised our family here, and lived on this property, which has been in his family for 20 years, 23 years, we would be willing..."
Maybe 100 years?
We built the house 23 years ago. The land has been in his family for about 100 years. We said, "You know what?" We said, "We would be willing to consider..." It's not out of the realm of possibility that we'd be willing to consider, if we're compensated, to move off that land and give up our home, if it really means good-paying jobs, but if it means that this area becomes a gravel pit, it's not worth it. And the whole process, the way that this has been taken one step at a time, it just doesn't make sense to us. You had something to say about that?
I want to thank Anissa for contacting us and asking for our opinion, and just a part of that, that I wrote to her, is that there are a couple of things that concern me. Politics, we hear about it all the time, and it concerned me that in the Edgerton Reporter, it was reported that when Mr. Watson was developing Martin Downs, which we've actually seen, nice place, but when he was down there, tried to purchase, in my mind, politicians that were favorable to him. I know it happens all the time, but it doesn't speak well to me, and I just don't appreciate that sort of thing. And another thing I wonder is, why is it incumbent on the city to think that you need to annex this property to make it of any value to you as its city? That property's a mile out of the city. You put an exit there, aren't people going to come to Milton? And, you know, why can't the townships handle it? What is the big rush? And that concerns me. A lot of things can happen in a big rush. And I don't believe that we should be making rushes to judgment. I do know we need jobs, but I worked in the construction business for many years, and I know that not that many people are hired by gravel pits when you come right down to it. And I grew up here, I'd hate to see that land turned into something like a big ditch. So, thank you for, Anissa, for contacting us, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinion.
Thank you for speaking. Con and Donnie Heinan. I hope I said that right.
Hi, we're Don and Connie Heinan. We live on Kitter Road in Fulton Township. We moved here almost thirty years ago. The reason we moved here is because we wanted to experience the quiet, peaceful lifestyle of country living. We enjoy the outdoors and all the beautiful wildlife we see here. What will happen to the wildlife if Bill Watson is allowed to build an I-90 interchange, an industrial park, or mine the area? If Bill Watson wants to help out the people in this area, fill the empty warehouses that are already built and leave the wildlife and our beautiful countryside alone. Filling empty warehouses will help the people of the area. An interchange, industrial park, or mine will also increase the pollution in the area. We'll have air and noise pollution from added vehicles, trains, and new industries. Bill Watson was asked if he could promise not to mine the area. He said he would not eliminate that option. I'm concerned that mining could affect our well water. And what about the water runoff if an industrial park is built? Bill Watson's plan includes four million square feet of building space. Two inches of rain creates five million gallons of water runoff, and that's just from the rooftops. That does not include the parking lots, added roads, or the interchange. Five million gallons of water is enough to fill three and a half football fields with over four feet of water. And our average rainfall in the area is thirty-five inches, and that doesn't include snow melt. We currently see fields flooded in the spring. If fields are converted to warehouses, parking lots, and roads, we will have more flooding. Bill Watson is often vague about providing definite answers. Something that is definite, though, an industrial park or mine will forever destroy beautiful countryside and wildlife that can never be regained. Bill Watson has quoted as saying, "If this type of development goes in, the neighborhood changes pure and simple. Please don't allow that to happen. We want to stay in the area for many more years and continue to enjoy the beautiful, peaceful lifestyle of country living. Please destroy the Watson Evermore Project. Don't destroy the quality of our lives." Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add. My name's Don, and I appreciate to finally see something on the agenda here that it says potential development. Thank you. Potential.
Next up is Andy Walton. I have a stealth sneeze.
Hi, I'm Andy Walton, I'm a member of the Fulton Town Board. Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate your, your talk at the beginning. You did address a lot of the things that I was concerned about. One of the things, as a, as a board member, we share the frustration of not really knowing what direction this is really wanting to go. And in such, personally, I've heard nothing but negative feedback from people in our community, and all for very good and valid reasons. But if by chance, all these stars align for Mr. Watson, and there is a real value to this development for the overall good of the community. The city of Milton stands to gain more than the towns of Milton and Fulton. Is the city willing to recognize that this is a community, not just a city against the town people? We're all friends, we all intermingle, we all have relatives in both communities. Are you willing to work with the towns so that those that are sacrificing the most can at least get some value out of the project?
Well, I'll answer that. Absolutely, we want to work with the towns. As I said in our, in my opening remarks there, first of all, I grew up in the town. I'm, I'm from the town of Milton, my family's been in the town of Milton for a hundred and some years since they stumbled over here from Germany. And that's, you know, my grandpa has said some of the same things, same concerns that are being voiced here tonight, and I take those and your comments very seriously. I think it's important for us not just to work together for the positives, but also for us to work together to identify the potential negatives. I feel like we've been chasing a little bit of a moving target with trying to get the, the specifics here, and I'm sure you feel the same. And so I think it's important for us to make a, an effort to work together to, to really nail down what is, that is the potential.
I, I think one of the first steps that we could take as, you know, the three communities, is to flat out let Mr. Watson know that absolutely nothing is going to proceed unless he is willing to go along with permanent deed restrictions against mining.
I could see having that discussion, I think we should have that discussion.
If that's his underlying issue, and we make it clear to him that it's not going to happen, the whole thing could die right now.
Good. I, I have no desire to see a mine out in that area. I've never liked looking at that kind of a thing, I wouldn't want to live next to it. I wouldn't want to live even three miles away from it. I don't believe it creates jobs, I don't believe it creates value, and I do believe it creates significant liability, and it damages our image and our environment. So I agree with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Jody and Tony Tripaso.
I'm not going to add a limb, I'm going to stick to my notes. My name is Jody Tripaso, I live at eighty-three forty-one North Kitter Road. I would first like to thank the City of Milton Common Council for organizing this public listening session and allowing me to tell you why I am opposed to Mr. Watson's development interchange idea. I would also like to thank Mr. Watson. His recent actions have brought neighbors out of their homes and drawn them together. Many community relationships have been created or rekindled because of our passion for this land. I could stand here tonight and tell you my own story of why this idea, if approved, would negatively impact my life and the goals of my husband and I have for ourselves, but your decision should not be based on the impact of one or two lives. You have and will hear plenty of individual reasons. Instead, I want to tell you why this proposal conflicts with the city of Milton's plan for successful progress. Community growth must be sustainable and beneficial for the entire community, not solely beneficial to economic development. The city of Milton's two thousand fourteen strategic plan includes objectives using the adopted two thousand eight smart growth and comprehensive plans. As you may know, the concept of a smart growth plan is to provide guidance when optimizing development opportunities while avoiding urban sprawl by encouraging high-density development and reusing land. It promotes planning, sustainable growth, while adhering to basic principles which include preserving open space and farmland, and encouraging development decisions that are predictable, fair, and cost-effective. One of the purposes for Milton's comprehensive plan is to preserve natural and agricultural resources in and around the city. Included in the agricultural summary, it recommends the promotion of a compact development pattern to limit the conversion of farmland and focus on techniques that minimize the amount of land required for additional growth. Milton's vision is to retain the small-town character of its earliest days. As for economic development, specifically on the west side, the plan states that Milton intends to consider businesses for this area that do not have noise, odor, trucking, or other effects which would negatively impact the rest of the city. One of those policies adopted in this plan is to require that new business or industrial developments provide adequate separation and buffering between facilities and nearby existing or planned residential neighborhoods. Mr. Watson's plan does not adhere to any of this. An interchange and industrial development of this proposed size doesn't promote a small-town feel. It promotes destruction of farmland, urban sprawl, heavy trucks, more trains, loud noise, congestion, and an increased risk of traffic accidents that accompany an interchange. All of this negatively impacts the city. In addition, the drawings that Mr. Watson has shared indicates industrial structures within feet of my front door, as well as my neighbors. How does this satisfy, satisfy adequate separation and buffering between facilities and nearby residents? The fifteen hundred acres of land in this proposal are over half the size of Milton today. Do you want one man or one corporation owning over half of Milton? His plan clearly contradicts the city's smart growth and comprehensive plan. I agree, business developments in Rock County in the past year haven't been enough to improve the jobless rate. However, destroying farmland, pouring concrete, and constructing buildings does not guarantee jobs and economic growth either. Fill the vacancies first, utilize the industrial developments we already have, let our community's smart growth plan dictate how, where, and at what pace we progress, and not Mr. Watson's on-the-fly agenda and empty promises. His unorganized, fast, pressured methods should be countered with sound, thoughtful, and intelligent approach that in the end will be best for our community.
You gotta follow that, huh? Should've gone first. I'm not, I'm not quite the spokesman she is, but I'll try to do my best. Anyways, my name, my name is Tony Tripaso, I'm Jody's husband. We live on North Kitter Road. We're deeply impacted by the, you know, by the, you know, by this project. Our, we moved in about two, four months ago. We found out two months ago that this project's going, is, you know, is coming in, you know, is coming online, or proposed to come online. But anyways, that's, I wanted to talk more of the, the business side of it that I, I think a lot of people, you know, are not, maybe not be aware of. But I also want to first start and thank, you know, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, you know, for allowing us to talk, and the rest of the board members as well. My degree is in construction management. I've been managing construction projects for, you know, for twenty years. I've done everything from, you know, from, you know, family subdivisions to, you know, to large-scale development projects similar to this one. So, you know, over the past few months, I've watched as Mr. Watson and Mr. Hogerson's adventures have unfolded. So, you know, the more, the more research I do, the more disturbing it is. So, you know, my question is, is the realistic of this venture? Is it, is it realistic, or is it just a field of dreams? Mr. Watson seems like every time he, you know, he, and he came into, you know, came in and spoke with you folks, you know, he, he was on his PR presentation, you know, about, about adding interchanges and bringing growth and converting fertile, fertile farmland into a booming industrial park that would add thousands of jobs and increase tax revenues. You know, although without, without even providing tangible facts or written documentation, you know, but they are very, very, and they're all taken at face value. This, and I don't know if it's because it's, you know, he hit the buzzwords. And then the other thing I wanted to address is the, is the realistic timeframe. You know, it's like he wants to, you know, he wants to, in the spring, he wants to start construction. You know, like you said, I've been, I've been in this business for twenty years, and I've done, I've done projects that were similar to this where, you know, farmer had, you know, had, I don't even know how many acres he had, but he owned the land, donated it to the, to the city, they went through the whole process, and it was, you know, it was a big shopping center with, you know, with that King Supers and the whole nine yards. And it still took him ten years, you know, to, you know, to, to bring the thing, you know, fully online and, and, you know, full tuition. So that's, you know, that's one of the things I would like to, you know, have everybody, you know, realize that, you know, sometimes, you know, his timeframes just don't seem, you know, seem realistic. And then the business side of it, you know, I, you know, one of the things that I, that I've noticed in, in his, in, in his whole approach to it, it's like, you know, it's just, he came up with the idea one day and said, hey, you know, I'm going to go to the town and say, hey, I want to, you know, I want to build an industrial park, I have all this land, you know, and, and just because you have money and, you know, you know, some power, you know, it doesn't always mean that, that it's, that it's feasible. So one thing I noticed is he's missing the business plan, missing feasibility studies, you know, market analysis, you know, it violates the, you know, the smart growth plan, you know, most developers, when they, you know, when they approach, they've already got their, you know, their financials already online, they've already discussed everything with, you know, with zoning, with, with the DNR, with, with EPA and other government agencies. He's, you know, he's done his due diligence to, you know, to make sure this is a feasible project for, you know, for everyone. And just the, the ones that I, the, the other parts of his business plan that I, I wanted to kind of address at this meeting is the, is the market analysis. You know, it's like, I want to, you know, I didn't have a lot of time to do a lot of research on this, but I wanted to, to Rock County five point oh, and I found out that there's, there's nineteen industrial parks, you know, within Rock County. I mean, that's a lot. And then, and I also found out, there's thirty-two million square feet of existing industrial and warehouse buildings, you know, most of them within minutes of the interstate. So, so Rock County also has one of, one of Wisconsin's largest concentrations of shovel-ready sites, about six hundred acres of good, good portions to the, of the sites. And most of the, you know, a lot of the counties and stuff like that, they'll, they'll, they'll give these guys the land. And I think, I think a hundred and fifteen acres is actually here in Milton. And then the other one that bothers me too is the feasibility. You know, it's, you know, basic things, it's like, you know, do the revenues, the revenues must exceed, exceed the costs. And so, you know, if he, if Mr. Watson says he's going, you know, he's, he's going to come in and he's going to build the, and he's going to pay for the annexation, he's going to develop, pay for the development, the infrastructure, you know, to construct the buildings, do the interchange, you know, do all the maintenance and stuff, is that, is that realistic? I mean, can he, you know, can he, you know, can he do this and make his rents, you know, have it so it's at market or below market? And then my other one is the, the gravel pits. That was, and I think most people already touched on that, so. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Michelle Staff.
Hi, my name's Michelle Staff, I live at six-three-three-one North Consolidated School Road, I'm also a town board supervisor for the town of Fulton. And I, Andy said a lot of the same thing I was going to say, but with that being said, I think this is a very ambitious project, and it was a little disconcerting to me that when Mr. Watson was told some of the issues at the town level with the, the smart growth plan and zoning, that he wanted to come to the city right away and annex. So I just wanted you to make, be aware, and I know you are a lot aware of, of a lot of the issues, and a lot of the folks said a lot of the issues. And I just hope the city council takes stock in all the comments tonight and thinks very closely, you know, on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sue Kualaa.
Hello, I am Sue Kualaa, we live on Pineview Court near Threshamance Park. This basically Fulton Township and would be in our backyard. I have heard lots of people speak, and I agree pretty much with what everything has been said so far. We do not want an industrial park in the area, we do not want an interchange, we don't want annexation to the city of Milton, we don't want any mining. We really want the country to stay country, we would like farmland to stay farmland. We moved out there thirty-five years ago to get away from Milwaukee, not to be in congestion, in noise, in traffic, in lots of train noise, pollution, all of it that you get. We just really like nice country. It's nice to be able to go walk on roads, it's nice to be able to bicycle and not worry about a truck or a semi-truck or lots of traffic. I would encourage all of the council people, town board members, planning people, any of you, as you're looking into this proposed development, do your due diligence. Don't just leave it up to some of your city officials or city staff people, look online, see what you can find. Mr. Watson has done developments other places, and there's been lots of glitches through some of them. Keep our farmland farmland. I don't really want to end up having to buy food from China. If we keep paving farmland, good farmland, putting concrete all over the place, we're going to have an industrial park going down ninety from Chicago to Madison. I don't think that's quality of life for Milton at all. A few questions. I know this is not quote, "An official development..." I know this is not, quote, "an official development, official proposal," but there's tons of rumors floating around, like, is it a gravel pit? Is it gonna be a landfill? Is it gonna be annexed to the city of Janesville versus the city of Milton? It would be nice to have answers to the public, us. And is there a way we can find out, as public citizens, what's going on behind the scenes? Are you, any of you talking to Watson and the developers? Is Planning Commission, are you talking to DOT? What's happening? We can read minutes, but minutes only tell us a few things. Mr. Watson said at one point, if it was in his backyard, he wouldn't want it. He lives in Menlo Park, California, right now. He fought very, very hard there to not have a road put through that was in his backyard. This is in our backyard, and we don't want it.
Thank you very much. Bill Kualah.
Hello, my name is Bill Kualah, and I live right where she does, over there. Anyway, yeah, the first thing I want that really has bothered me about this whole thing here is the lack of information to the public. We've been in several town board meetings, and we were told that there's nothing for the boards to act upon, no proposals, no formal proposals there. So it was not open for discussion. But yet, when you look at these maps, these maps have been around for quite a while, it's not hard to figure out what Mr. Watson is up to. And another thing that bothers me, he owns a lot of land that's not in that purple area, which adds up to over 2,000 acres, by the way. You just don't know what he's up to right now. So I ask for more openness from all the town boards and the city council here, and I would like to ask you if you could provide minutes and attendance lists for all past and future meetings having anything to do with Evermore, or Jeff Helgeson and his Development Corporation. This is the biggest thing, in my opinion, that has hit the city of Milton in the 35 years that it's been here by far. And doggone it, the public has a right to know about it. All of it. As far as the project itself goes, we don't know what kind of companies he's got lined up to fill out this complex. We don't know what kind of effect they're gonna have on the environment, although, looking at that map, it's not hard to imagine the sewer line going right into the Rock River there in that northwest corner of that map. It's desirable to preserve farmland. After all, we all gotta eat. That's one thing that we need, first of all. Preservation of farmland is, after all, farming is one of the largest industries in the United States, and certainly probably the largest in Wisconsin. And make no mistake, if you want to talk about industrial development, well, agriculture is an industry. It's just not contained within four walls. So, a couple of facts I was able to dig off, or read off the internet, from the National Resource Inventory study conducted by the USDA. From 1982 to 2007, over 41 million acres nationally have been converted to development. That's an area the size of Illinois plus New Jersey. 13.7 million of that is prime farmland. Now, if Mr. Watson is right, and this nation does grow by another 100 million people in the future decades, where are they gonna get their food from? Because the ratio of acres of farmland per person is gonna go down, and that's not a As far as the number of jobs that he claims will come to the area, up to 15,000, anywhere between 1,000 and 15,000, or anywhere in between there. Well, how long is eventually? Does anybody remember the same promise was given by General Motors when they built the Saturn Plant in Tennessee? The reality was that most of those employed were not locals, but people that were brought in from other locations and not locally. So the unemployed people in that area weren't helped as much as everybody thought they were gonna be. And I also have concerns about the gravel pit. What happens if this development doesn't take place? Enough's been said on that. And maybe it's just me, but I also find it odd that, on one hand, on Highway 26 here, we built that bypass to resolve congestion on that side, and now on the west side, we're considering a project to bring more congestion in. If 15,000 jobs really does occur, we're gonna have 15,000 cars traveling back and forth on County M every morning and every night. Does that mean County M's gonna be a four-lane road in the future? Probably. And what about the housing development that hasn't been discussed? 15,000 jobs is gonna result in more housing developments coming into the area. Perhaps that's what he means to do with the rest of the 2,000 acres that he's got here. People gotta live somewhere. In short, there's no need to proceed as quickly as Mr. Watson wants with this project, given its complexity and potential effects on our lives, our citizens. I understand that industry has to move quickly, make good use of funds. I understand that jobs need to be created in the Rock County area. I'm aware that this county has one of the highest unemployment rates in the state due to a lot of reasons. But what I don't like is the fact that one wealthy individual, i.e. Mr. Watson, can have this much influence on the political will of those who represent us and on our lives. In my opinion, that's just not right. Thank you very much.
Linda Clark, 1015 Brown Drive, Milton. I am going to just give you some general comments that I have with regard to the project and some concerns that I have. I know that throughout this meeting, a lot of these things will probably be repeated. I've been sitting here trying to compress my list here, but it's just not working. So, one of the big concerns that I have with this development is the effect that we're gonna have on Madison Avenue coming into town. We know, of course, the council has already looked at the situation with coming in on M and it being right there at the elementary school. The problems that we've had in the past with the state and their willingness to give us stop signs is something that I think that we really need to take into consideration because we have repeatedly tried to do that over at the middle school in Northside, and as all we've gotten is either temporaries, like what we have at West, or we've gotten more crossguards. So, that's a big concern to me, and with the Black Hawk Tech coming in, our hopes, of course, is that a lot of that traffic is going to support our local businesses, and we're also hoping that they will utilize the Innovative Express. However, that is still going to be an expense to the city because we will need to give them a stop, a shelter. And we already know Black Hawk Tech is not going to pay for that. So, those are just things that I think that we need to keep in mind. And we know from the budget process that we just did, that we're not in the position to hire any more police officers at this time, but yet, we're thinking about adding another stretch of the road all the way out to the interstate, which gives them, that area, John Paul Drive, which we know from our recent traffic study, has definitely increased in traffic. Parkview Drive, Maxine and I knew what was gonna happen there, just totally increased on that street. And then, of course, you have going out to the 26th bypass. So, I mean, there is a lot of things that we need to keep in mind with this. And I do realize, of course, that economic development is a very important thing that we need to have for our tax base. But like somebody else had mentioned, there are three municipalities here that are also in need of a good tax base. And so I would hope that we can keep that in mind, and I think that it's something that we definitely need to not brush into. Our other industrial parks have been done in phases. We've made sure that we've had all the infrastructure in, we've done our studies, we have reached out, we have been selective as to who is coming in. Are we going to be able to do that with this? I haven't quite gotten a clear answer on that. I don't know if anybody else has. No?
Yeah.
Not yet. Yeah, so, those are, you know, I feel like it's very important that we do prepare for any kind of a major development like this. When we did the East Side Industrial Park, we spent three years just realigning County Highway M, getting our infrastructure in, doing the lights, I mean, all of these different things. And I just feel like we need to just take this easy, and that's what I would request from the council, is to just proceed cautiously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Chesmore.
Can I just get to the bottom of the stack?
We still got three more.
Tom Chesmore, 345 Elm Street. The street is blocked for an hour and a half a day because of the choo-choo train, which is gonna create more traffic since where you want to put this interchange. As Brett mentioned, this came up a couple of times when I was mayor. I told him I wasn't interested. City couldn't afford it. We've all heard about the traffic pass to grade school. I pick up my grandson just about a couple of times a week, and I can tell you right now, the last thing we need is one more car down there when school lets out. It's a traffic hazard, and I'll tell you what, I don't know what the price of a child's life is if one of them gets hit with this thing coming into town, but it isn't worth a nickel. Train traffic. At least once a day, you have a section of a city that I live in, that if there's a house fire, the fire department's gonna have to go all the way out M and come in the backroads because you have a train that blocks Vincent on both ends and Elm Street on the other. I know we can't fight the railroad. Jerry and I tried that. You can't beat 'em. The thing is, you're gonna increase traffic out there, train traffic into that part of the city, which is already stuffed up. Unless you plan on building a bridge over to my house, I'm gonna fight this thing with tooth and nail. Who takes ownership of County M? If we annex it in there, I imagine the city does. It's a long stretch of road. Who's gonna repair it? I would imagine that'll fall to the taxpayers. Now, jobs. This is a big thing. I know, oh yeah, I mention jobs and people jump through hoops. Well, I got news for you. The best job you're gonna find out there right now for anybody working in a warehouse is about $10 an hour. $10 an hour is not gonna be enough for anybody to support a family. So, my next question to the council, are you ready to start changing zoning laws in some parts of the city so we can build low-income housing and maybe long, big apartment complexes? Because I would imagine that the mayor will probably go out and talk to somebody with a boatload of money about building some cheap apartments. And how many people want those in their backyard? You're gonna end up changing zoning to do that, and we all know how much fun that is. And I guess my final thing is, and it was said a couple of times already, is Mr. Watson says he wouldn't want this in his backyard. Well, what the hell makes him think we want it in ours?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Just wanted to make a comment on just a couple of things that have come up, especially with the traffic. We're gonna be announcing here very soon a traffic commission to look at school letouts and drop-off times. It's horribly dangerous around, especially John Paul and Madison and Northside of Madison. So we're gonna pull together the school district representatives, folks from the city, folks from Rightway Bus, and start to figure it out. Another thing we're doing is working with our police chief and our police staff to identify if there are opportunities to put a police officer out there during school drop-off and pickup times to get a better handle on this in the interim. So, that's an excellent point. And the former mayor's other point was the County M, and that would stay at County Highway. Next up is Chris Ellis.
I'm Chris Ellis. I live on County Trunk N in Milton, in the town of Milton. I didn't prepare any speech because I just found out about this about a week and a half ago, so I've been gathering information, talking to people. I have a lot of concerns. I don't like the fast track. I hear the mayor talking a lot about, "I like this, I like this, I want this." But, you know, we're the citizens here. What do we want? We don't want the annexation. We don't want the industrial park. We certainly don't want the mining, and we don't want the interchange. I understand the interchange is good for police, for accidents, for people to get on the interstate, but what about the environment? What about the wildlife? When we came here and bought land in the 90s, we were told that they didn't want to subdivide because of the good agricultural land. Well, now you're gonna take 2,000 acres of good agricultural land and put it into industrial park? And I guess there's a lot of unanswered questions, and a lot of questions that still need to be asked because everything's so vague. There's nothing that has been proposed. There's nothing that's out on the table. And I think all the citizens here have a major concern because we haven't been apprised of anything. And maybe the council doesn't know that much, but I don't think you can make a good decision by not having any facts and the true facts. So I agree with everybody that came up here and spoke. I think everybody did a great job, and everybody's concerned, and we don't want it here. So, thank you.
We're in the home stretch here. Lance and Terry Fenna.
Thank you for the city for providing this time for us to speak, and thank you for so many of the citizens in the area to take time to come here. And thank you, Bill Watson, for making it possible for me to meet many of you. I live on Menogue Road, which I'm just finding out now may be a future truck route. I grew up out on Highway 26. Many of you may have known the Christmas Tree Farm going out towards Janesville. I grew up on a highway that, you know, every few days we had accidents out there. I didn't want that, so I moved out in this area, and this kind of surprises me and puts me on my heels. The past ventures pursued by Bill Watson, both local and elsewhere, does nothing but add more concern for me because of his questionable tactics. Can we trust Bill Watson, who takes his dream to the newspapers and politicians? Can we trust Bill Watson, who takes his dream to the newspapers and politicians first, then after hearing criticism, finally decides to come to the local townships? And when he does talk, there is little said about specific plans. Instead, he talks about his visions for fixing national health care and otherworldly problems. I believe if Mr. Watson ever does present a real plan, one of the things the city should do is make sure he is able to show proof of his successes. What projects has he brought online? Is he consistent? And does he follow through with his promises? Does he take the path of an inexperienced developer? Or I should say, does he take the path of an experienced developer? Or does he take shortcuts and rush projects through? We've heard he wants to break ground in two months as soon as the ground thaws. I ask, what's the hurry? Does he need to hurry so he can supply the I-90 expansion with gravel? Does he need to hurry before people can research his history? Or does he want to rush the development without taking the time for the proper environmental, economic, and community impact studies? Studies take time, but they are done to protect the community and residents from disaster. They shouldn't be hurried or bypassed. If the studies show that the development is not in the public's best interest, it shouldn't be approved. It wouldn't be the first time a development or interchange has been turned down. Do we really need this? All the communities in the area are touting shovel-ready property. There are development signs and empty fields that have been there for years. There are many empty buildings in the area, too. Dana and Edgerton is one example. So, why should we believe that Bill Watson's buildings are going to be so magical as to have so much success where everyone else has failed? I've heard of a promise of high-end, highly skilled manufacturing jobs. Sure sounds like a campaign promise to me. As Peter Cummings, a Florida developer, once said, "So often what happens is that promises just never get implemented. The developer puts on a magic show with mirrors, tries to turn base metals into gold, and looks for fools to sell to." Why should we give up our good farmland in a farming community to help Mr. Watson achieve his dream, dreams, while so many of our dreams will be crushed? Residential property values near this industrial park will be decimated. Just imagine having your house next to the GM plant with all that chain-link fence, blacktop, bright lights, and noise. That isn't my dream. I don't want to live in Mr. Watson's neighborhood and his land to make-believe. And I thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, is Ken Kitter.
Thank you. I was standing before a previous city council 20-some years ago, in 1988. I am the one that brought about the change of mind that they could not dump the sewer from the city of Milton into the small creek behind my house. This was my efforts. I'm still very proud of it. I still have all the records for it. And what the people tonight have talked about is everything that I would've said if I'd have had the chance. I have the honor of being that person. I called on a couple of my neighbors that had land, and one of them was Mulder Farms. Mulder Farms was dead-set against destroying the wetlands and wildlife area that sits below my property on the downside of this proposal. And it was discussed earlier in the meeting here. One person stated that all this water, the runoff would come down in that direction. Well, yes, and it goes through the corner of my property. And so, I have the ability to stand there and take water samples, if and when it becomes necessary to protect the wetlands that I protected the last time around. The city had went three meetings to finalize their proposal at that time. And the only reason I got involved was the city went ahead of themselves and sent me a notice that they might put their sewer line down either the front of my pack, property, or down the back of my property. I'd, I'd never heard about it in time even. I put together about 15 citizens in the neighborhood, the same as you folks are here tonight. We came in, and I sat in the front row, and they had five proposals. And they went through the four of them, and then they says, here's the easy one. It's a cost, least amount of money. Goes down into this little drainage ditch and out into this marsh and into the river. Well, what they didn't know is this used to be my family's property. And a portion of what's being talked about tonight was bought from my family also recently. Quite a bit, in fact. Doesn't make me happy. But to me, the fact that it was brought up about the runoff was the one thing I wanted to be so much involved with the people tonight about. This little marsh is about, about a mile across. There's only one house on it. His name is Richard Hodge, and he was, his family was one of the people that stood there with me that night in 1988 to stop what was going on. The DNR was there. I don't think there's any DNR here tonight. Don't make any difference. Before that, I was on a DNR committee at one time, so I still have connections in knowing how to get things done, luckily. At that particular time, the DNR was there, and they'd sent a couple of young people down the railroad tracks, and all they saw was marsh. What they didn't see was five beaver dams between there and the river. What they didn't see is the whole bottom area of that was full of springs. What they didn't have records of, that they'd lost, was in the early 50s, the DNR had tried to buy that property to put it into a fish hatchery. And my family didn't want to sell it at that time. And that's the way it went. But when they found out that this was Class 1 trout stream, the city of Milton was forced to go a different direction. They were forced to, forced to do Grade 1 classification. If it had been found out afterwards that this was a, a Class 1 trout stream, it would've been stopped, and the city of Milton would've lost a lot of money. Because there wasn't enough information out, there wasn't enough research done on this situation. I am honored to say that this, our area down there, we have eagle families. We have eagles down there nesting. The neighbor I'm talking about, he wants to put up a big nest for peregrine falcons down there. It's been one of his dreams to put that in. And I belong to several of the wildlife federations, so I can find answers when people want to know questions. And thank you for your time tonight.
I'd like to be able to say something as a city council member, because I believe there's a perception here that we're gonna act without doing our due diligence. And we are taking our time. We've only had, we've had two meetings where this has brought up, some of the things brought up, Mr. Cunningham brought up tonight about the map we had never seen. Tell me, that was never anything that the Milton, that the city of Milton has done. So, I, I want to clarify that the perceptions that we're trying to do something, that we aren't taking our time. Because I believe we are gonna, we are gonna do our due diligence. There are gonna be, if any development happens, there are gonna be environmental impact statements. We are going to ask questions. We have been asking questions about, about this development. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna act, do any, at least I'm not gonna do any action without knowing what any impact of development would, would be. And we have not seen any proposals, and we are, so there's really, we have nothing to discuss. We haven't anything to discuss. We haven't seen anything. And so, and I, and I hear a lot of concern about saving farm, about saving farmland. Well, I hope that as many of you that came here tonight will go up to Madison and please tell the people up in Madison to not stop working on changing the law, that we can sell farmland to foreign, as much farmland to foreign buyers, because there is a law going on. China's, in the last 10 years, has bought, has moved a million people to Africa where they bought land. And so, where's the outrage? Because if Mr. Watson doesn't get what he wants, what, why not, somebody says he's got 2,000 acres? What's preventing him from selling that 2,000 acres to China, so they can come in here and they can, and they can utilize that land? So, I hope that some of you take your outrage there, because you're talking so much about saving farmland, because this is a big issue, and I don't see the outrage with that issue. So, because I believe that we are doing what we need to do to study this issue. We are not gonna do anything hasty. I believe I can speak for all the council here. So, you can feel, you can feel safe for sure that we are gonna discuss this thoroughly, and nothing's going to be done without really thinking about this and knowing how it's gonna impact the lives. Because some people said, this community is very important to me, and I consider the townships our community, but there's a lot of you, I had your children, I'm concerned about what happens. And again, I hope you take your concern to Madison to stop this foreign takeover of our, of our land, because if they get control of it, then are you gonna be able to protect your way of life the way you want to? So, that's all I have to say.
I also would like to speak, because this entire meeting has been conversational. We have nothing in writing. And as a landlord, I show apartments. They say, oh, and the TV would look so nice there. If they do not fill out the form, they are not an applicant. And in this manner, we have no paperwork. Therefore, we cannot answer our questions or your questions. So, we are all waiting for our paperwork, which we do not have. And I apologize that we don't have a better answer.
I've been asked to start.
I registered to speak, and I did not get called.
I'm sorry, I didn't have your...
Come up, please. Come on up.
Lucy Koala.
My name's Lucy Koala. I live in Pineview Estates. Our neighborhood's gonna be the backyard to this development. I wrote a letter, I sent it to the city of Milton, the townships Fulton and Milton. I just want to make sure that you guys got it. I know I got a response from the mayor and Anissa. Thank you very much. Did the rest of you get a chance to read it? I'm always curious if people read this. Okay. Just to reiterate, I am 100% against this development. The industrial park, the interchange, it's completely unnecessary. I'm just gonna basically read what I wrote for anybody else that didn't hear it. I am 100% completely and totally against any and all development proposed by Bill Watson and any of his business associates regarding the proposed interchange in industrial park at or near County M and I-90. Against the annexation, against development on agricultural zoned lands. Bill Watson has said many times in all of his presentations to the city and the towns, and quoted in the papers, if people don't want this, he'll go away. If there's no political will, he'll go away. If it was in his backyard, he wouldn't want it either. Jeff Helgeson has come up here and said, he doesn't want to go through with this project if the landowners don't want it. The landowners in question are not only Mulder Dairy Farms and the people in purple on that map, but all of us who live on the surrounding properties, the neighbors of this. I'm telling you, the town boards of Fulton, Milton, the city of Milton, I don't want this. Go away. We don't want this in this room. Go away. No one who lives next to or near this monstrosity wants this. Tell him to go away. Would you guys want to live next to this? Can you guys answer it? Is that something you can answer at this point? Would you want to live next to it? So, why would we want to live next to it?
I guess I'd have to, we haven't had a proposal, so what are we gonna live next to?
We don't know.
We don't know what we're gonna live next to.
You guys, I understand that as...
That's the thing, we don't know.
Politically, you can't say anything, because there's not official paperwork. But if there's not official paperwork, why does the city have all these maps hanging on the walls? Or the town of Fulton, or that has a whole packet of information. Watson is coming here looking for political will. He's trying to feel it out, if it's possible. We're telling you, we don't want it. So, I don't see what the problem is, why you guys can't say that also. That's all I have to say.
The only, you know, you have a great letter, and I know, and I know you really well, because I hate Jesus.
Yes.
But it's, it's our job as, as representing the city that we hear from city people, too, say, so, and so, so we open up, so we could hear from everybody.
Yeah.
I wanted to tell you that I live in the city. Right. But don't we have to have this meeting to find out what they, what they said? I mean, that's all we're doing, is listening, and we're taking everything you're saying into consideration.
Certainly, this is not the last opportunity there will be for public comment.
Right, and thank you for...
Certainly, this is not.
...to hold a public conference.
We appreciate.
But this is how we're all feeling. And that purple is not in the city of Milton. So, do the city of Milton people actually know what's going on? How are they gonna be informed?
They, they know what's going on, because I, a number of people have talked to me.
But if they were informed, there, there's one person here.
No, there were, there were plenty of people here from the city.
And many of them have said to me, be cautious. See, they, they have, they have addressed me with the issue, and they said, be cautious. And that's what I think we're doing, we're being cautious. And we're looking at, because that's our job to listen to them as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much, Lucy. Sorry we missed you, it was very...
I have to kind of go along with the other two, what they've said, but also, someone said that we weren't telling you what was going on. We don't know what he, we don't, we don't have any answers. And, and the first time I've seen that map was this evening. However, I did get in the mail, a map sent to me, and I looked that all over. But we can't do anything or even talk about what we would do, because we don't know. We have no answers from him. All we've heard is what he, big, you know, I'm gonna build these big buildings, and all these jobs are coming into town. Well, yeah, but what is he going to do? And that's why I, I, we don't have the answers either.
Yeah, I can't, I can't stress, stress to you all enough how, how confused we felt at certain points. I didn't, I didn't know that there was going to be a presentation to, I forget if it was the town of Milton or the town of Fulton Board. I didn't know that was happening until I read about it in the paper. I didn't know about that petition, or that annexation map that went down to County Y until it was in the Gazette. But, well, Alder, Alder Person Welch.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, because like, I really love this, when we have a full room, and me... No, I know it's a stressful issue. I, I, I understand that. I don't live out there, but if I did live out there, this would really worry me a lot, too. And I can't say, because we don't know exactly what, what a proposal would look like that he's talking about. But I, I'm just, I appreciate you coming out here. It's not like beautiful weather to come out. Many of you have come out to two, three, and four meetings, and I, I think that says so much about our community, and how much we care. And we should all be so proud of where we live and who our neighbors are. I mean, really, even, I, I know that there's some negativity towards Mr. Watson, but the, you know, it's bringing a community to, a community together, and to me, that's a positive. I have spoken to Mr. Watson. I have seen those maps, and I can tell you personally, I don't have any more information than any of you have. I want to have open and transparent meetings and open and transparent government. That's what I'm all about. And I really believe that our city council wants to do the right thing, and wants to make an informed decision. make an informed decision and wants to hear everybody's opinion. You know, I sit in meetings with all of these folks for hours at a time, and we don't always agree, and sometimes we strongly disagree, but in the end, we all want what's best for our community. Many of us have lived here for years. Many of you have lived your entire lives. I've raised my kids in this community. Nobody wants to see something bad happen here. I mean, we just don't. I know that as we move forward, as information becomes available, we are going to share it. I'm open to talk, meet with any of you. I've written letters. I've talked to you on the phone. I've reached out. You are always welcome to contact any of us on the council. We want to hear from you. This is what we're elected to do regardless of whether you live in the city of Milton or not, because this is such a huge impact on the greater community. So that's, that's all I want to say. And I, I guess you're right when you say we do have some paperwork. Now, we don't have official requests for annexation, and we don't have detailed plans, but we have maps, and we have a proposal. And if we didn't have something going on, we wouldn't have had a listening session. So we definitely got stuff going on, but we don't have a lot of details or a lot of specifics. So I just want to say thank you to everybody again.
Alderman Adams.
Well, I just want to say the same thing. We're all in the same boat. We don't have any details. And I appreciate all the input already, whether it's negative or positive. We're not going to move one step without detailed explanations of what this fellow's plans are. I'm concerned with some of the parallels that could be drawn to the Martin Downs incident in Florida, and there's comments there about promises that weren't kept. We don't deal in promises. If somebody's going to commit to something, they're going to commit to it in writing, and they're going to sign an agreement, that that's going to be done, a legal agreement, not some handshake and word-of-mouth agreement. We're not going to do that. And we can't really have, I mean, other than getting together like this and talking about, we can't have an intelligent conversation about this, whether it's at the city level or the town board level, without some indication and some definite plan of what he wants to do. Jeff Helgeson, during his presentation, showed some plots out there where he could put buildings, but that's pie in the sky as far as I'm concerned. We need, we need to have definite details and signed commitments before we do anything. And, and even then, we might say no. I mean, if it doesn't serve the community at large, we're going to say no.
I saw two hands go up, so we're going to have two more comments, and then that's, that's it, because that's the purpose of the, the cards and the order of the day. But two very polite individuals.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm Jim Hanlon, Clug Road. I'm an expert in gravel pits. You met with the governor and the DOT? Just you or two of you?
DOT, yes. Yes.
Are you guys aware that Mr. Watson does not need a permit from you, the town of Milton or the town of Fulton, to open up a gravel pit for I-90?
That land isn't even in the city of Milton, so we're well aware he doesn't need anything.
Right. Mind me, he doesn't need a permit from nobody.
Doesn't need it from, doesn't need anything from us to do that, anything out there.
I'm talking about the other two. He does not need a permit to open up a gravel pit for I-90 if he gets, if his contractor gets the job. And, you know, I've been about that next road that's coming. I feel sorry for Mr. Cunningham, because 26 come through my gravel pit, and the state didn't buy nothing. I, I didn't sell. And so I know what's going to happen to Bob if the state decides to build this next road for Mr. Watson. So please.
Do you think it's likely that, that he'll be able to mine for the...
Oh, indefinitely. He'll go for I-90, and there'll be probably nine to 10 million yards come out of there if he can get most of the job.
You think he can?
Well, depends what he wants to sell it for. He's got a very good chance of getting it, because he's a close source, large source. But, you know, take your time on this, because, you know, if you stall it out long enough, he might lose I-90. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Thank you. Pete, did you want to talk? Did you want to?
Yeah. Nobody has talked about whether a person wants...
Pete, can you come up here?
We, I'm sorry, we need a forty minutes.
Yeah, I'm Pete Reaster. I farm with my brothers out west of Milton. And nobody has talked about this, whether you want to be annexed or it's a forest. Who pays for all the plumbing? Pat Howe has been a longtime citizen of the community, had a business here, didn't want the water, gets a bill of $39,000. We own eight tenths of a mile from the last house out. We don't want that water bill, sewer bill, gas bill, or whatever, whatever else goes with it. And now tonight, I hear Minogue Road might be a truck road. I don't, it doesn't bother me, because that's part of farming, is big trucks. But is that going to be a two-lane road or a four-lane road? That's what I had to say. Nobody has brought up who gets stuck with all the plumbing, whether you want this or not. We don't want it. We've gotten two calls today that says we sold out to them. That doesn't help our business, because who's going to want to rent to somebody who's quitting farming? And it's not true. He's bended us twice, but we're not interested.
Thank you very much.
I just have a question. There've been a couple of references to some development in Florida. Could you tell us something about that?
I don't have all the information with me, but we've gotten emails concerning the Martin Downs property in Florida that he brought up when he was here. And the newspaper articles that we received, this is from the late 80s or mid to late 80s, show that he did not develop that, even though he brought that up as, as one of his positive items. He didn't develop it. He, he sat on it and did some things, and then couldn't afford to go any farther, and he sold the property, and somebody else developed.
Well, to wrap up the night, someone said, I forget who said it, but this is, this is, it's absolutely true. This is the biggest thing that any of us have ever had to consider. All of us on this board, everybody who serves on the Milton Town Board, on the Fulton Town Board, everybody who is foolish enough to put their name on a ballot at some point, does it, not for the glory, not because they don't have anything better to do with themselves from seven to 10 o'clock on a Tuesday night, or a Thursday night, or whatever it may be. It's because we feel like it's our responsibility, our duty, to take our turn at the plate and try and do some good for the community. When things come up like this, where the stakes are so high, and it's something that not only have we never done it before, but we'll never do this again, this is something that we will never have an opportunity to consider, to debate, to work through, to experience. It's important we get it right. And I think we're going to do that with a healthy dose of patience. Bill Watson wants to be breaking ground here in a couple of months. That's just not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. There's no version of, of this world where there is going to be action here in the next couple of months, or even potentially the next couple of years. We have to have a healthy dose of public input. We recognize, obviously, that we're elected by the 5,500 people here in the city of Milton, but we also recognize, obviously, that outside of this room, the town boards, nobody makes a distinguishment between where we vote, based on what community we're a part of. We're a part of the community of Milton. Our new community brand signifies as much, and our tagline, which is "A Community Since 1838." We want to have a healthy dose of skepticism. We do with everything that we, that we encounter, especially economic development. And then finally, I want to make it really clear. The city of Milton is not for sale. The city of Milton cannot be bought. The city of Milton cannot be bullied, and the city of Milton cannot be pushed into doing things that are not in the best interest of our citizens. We received a check the other day for $5,000 from the developer in prepayment for some fees that we might want reimbursed. And just as I said we would do if we ever did get a check like that, we send it right back. We don't take prepayment. We don't take, we don't need money to do our due diligence on things. If it gets to a point where there was some annexation or development-driven activity, we might have a developer's agreement that would get us some reimbursement there. But we have no such agreement. And we are not doing any actions on behalf of or in conjunction with this development, because we haven't been petitioned for annexation. We haven't had a request for zoning. We haven't even had a particularly specific plan that stays in one place for too long. And so what we're doing is making sure we're doing the due diligence on the behalf of the citizens of the city of Milton, which we are fortunately looking out for the folks even beyond our borders. This council is incredibly thoughtful. Each and every one of these people are some of the finest people that I know here in the city of Milton. And there's a hell of a lot of good people here in town. But I can't tell you, over the last five years, and this is a little off-topic tonight, but I want to say it, because you never know how many, how many, you know, more chances you'll get to say it. It is my honor and my privilege to get to spend three excruciating hours, twice a month, with these people. These folks are some of my favorite people on earth. And, you know, to get together with them and to, to listen and debate and to argue, my God, to argue, it, it is one of the things that I look forward to most of all. And in an event like this, we were joking about, kind of dreading this evening, but I look forward to this. You know, we get a chance to hear from people who care about their community. And I'm going to tell you what, folks, I've been around this county. That does not exist in a lot of areas of Rock County, and it certainly doesn't exist in a lot of areas of the state. So everyone who came out here to speak, to disagree, to, to share their concerns, you should be proud. This is what democracy looks like. This is what a community looks like. So thank you very much for coming. We're finishing a little early, so we can mill about for a while, have some more talk. There's no cookies or anything, because we didn't think I had. But thank you very much.